Is a motion to permit the opportunity to speak for three minutes. During that three minutes, any agenda item that is before the council that evening can be covered. Once that opportunity is exercised to speak, then that speaker has forfeited any further opportunity to speak on the agenda items throughout the meeting and to speak at the end of the meeting during audience participation, whether on agenda items or not. That's the way the motion is currently framed.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay.
So, so option, I don't want to keep going. Option A, the only reason that somebody would like to choose to talk on three minutes, because they don't want to be here. It's real simple. I can't stay, that's my point where I get to talk, and I'm gone. That's option A. That's what the three minutes speak in the beginning, because otherwise you wouldn't speak at that point, there would no need to talk at that moment after the Pledge of Allegiance, because you're going to be here the whole meeting. You can participate on option B, talk on each agenda item and in the end. How is that? That's, wait, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. This is the options, that's why we're clarifying it, so hopefully it won't be that. I don't think anything happens that compelling that you don't know what you're going to say or has to be thought out. We've been doing this for three years and it hasn't posed a problem. Three years we've been doing the meeting just like this. So, right now, are you clear with it, Ms. Morelli? I want to make sure, Councilman.
No, I'm clear with it.
It's the same way we've been running the meeting thus far. Nothing's changed.
No. Before, they have the option to speak at the end, this is limiting that option to one speaking opportunity throughout the meeting. That's not what we have been doing for the last, no, it's not, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah.
It's not. We've been allowing people to speak afterwards if they have something else they want to talk about, a non-agenda item. They've been allowed to speak in audience participation.
With all due respect, I've been running the meetings for three years, and clearly, I very much always explain that at the beginning, this is the point where you're going to speak on agenda items, because you're not going to speak otherwise. Most of the time, people don't even participate. It's only been recently that a couple people have spoken and then started questioning the rules, but three years I've been running the meetings, usually nobody even speaks on it, but it's always clearly defined. You can pull back any of the tapes I've ever ran a meeting, and explains that, what that point is. So now, that's what the clarification is, just so we're clear, that's what the motion is right now. Three minutes up front, and that point is being used so that you don't have to stay the whole meeting, you want to be able to get your point out. That's what the motion here is. So we have a motion of support, and I still have lights. I got audience participation closed. Councilman Hagerty.
Until about a year and a half ago, or 30, 40 years, or, Jan's been on here for how many years, 25 years, Jan?
Yes.
There was no citizen participation at the beginning ever. So this was just an attempt to actually have more communication, to do that, to have more communication at the beginning for those folks, and that was the intent that particular evening when that was developed, for that individual that can't stay. If somebody wishes to, if we want to go back to where we were a year and a half ago, then we can go back to where you're a year and a half ago, and everybody can, those people can email us or do something of that nature, but it really had, with the exception of a couple cases, it's worked out very, very fine.
Okay. Councilman Peterson.
My only concern by limiting someone from coming back and speaking at the end is when things are added to the agenda. And people run back up here, because usually it's something snuck in through the back door, and they want to play hanky panky here. So, yeah, you get people who come back up to the council meetings who want to voice their opinions. Thank you.
Well, I think we have a resolved council, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson had a very fine suggestion, and I think we can adopt that, so nobody will ever have to be concerned about that happening. Councilman Morelli.
I'm sorry, I'll make my position very clear. I believe that the citizens should have a right to participate prior to the meeting for three minutes on any agenda item, or alternatively, speak on the agenda item during the regular agenda is done. But I am not for limiting audience, citizen participation after the agenda items are done. That's the thing that's bothering me, okay? Is that we are limiting any audience to three minutes, period, for the meeting. They no longer have the option to speak after that. So that's my problem. That's why I have some difficulty with it. It's not that I'm opposed to the audience participation beginning, or audience participation during agenda items, just afterwards.
But how would we be limiting them? They don't have to speak at the beginning. They're going to speak on each agenda item as they come up, because they're going to be here to do so. The intent of speaking at the beginning is because you don't want to be here. That's your wonderful opportunity not to have to wait to item number 10. That's, and it's never been in place. That was something that we added, because we had people complain that, listen, I don't want to stay late. So we added a slot that allows them, and the intent of that point in time is so that you don't, the people that speak here don't want to be here. That's why they're using that moment. Otherwise, you take option B, and you stay, and you hear the full entirety of the meeting. It's two reasons of how you're participating. It depends on the mindset when you come to the meeting, how you intend to participate in the meeting. That's what I'm trying to say two options are. Some people don't want to wait, and this, that, and we're going to take away the beginning and force someone to have to wait so he can place his concern, and maybe have to wait till 11, 12 o'clock at night, or 9 o'clock. We take away the ability to offer them the service of speaking and leaving. So I guess you have to decide your mindset when you're coming to the meeting. Does that make it any clearer? Is it giving them the opportunity not to have to stay?
Madam?
These are the people we're helping right now.
My problem with what you have said, and I understand what you said, and I understand what our intent was, but what we are doing is now making a decision for our citizens that if they don't want to speak during the agenda item, they are not permitted to speak at the beginning. So they have to make a decision if they're going to stay or leave. And if they're going to stay, then they have to wait until the agenda item comes up-
Correct.
-in order to speak, and then they have, then they can audience participate.
Absolutely.
I have a little difficulty with that, only because we're making, we're telling them that they have to make a decision as to where they're going to speak and what they're going to do, rather than giving them the freedom to do it in any one of the locations. But I understand what your motion is.
Okay.
I certainly have no objection to audience participation at the beginning, or audience participation on every single agenda item. I have no problem with that.
Right. I think we're all good.
No problem with that.
And if you look back prior to us coming in council, as Councilman Hagerty said, that participation was never in there, so we have increased participation, not reduced it, and we also increased it to accommodate the folks that say, I don't want to stay at your meeting, I want to get in, I want to get out. Let's call that the get in and get out moment. There's your opportunity, get in and get out and make your concern, and that's what we're voting on right now. Not restricting anybody else, but that's what that motion's for. Councilman Sexton.
I have to say one more thing. If a person decides to speak for three minutes before the agenda items, okay. If they want to speak for three minutes during the agenda items, okay. One or the other, right? But if the same person wants to come back and talk about something else in the city later, can that person talk about that stuff, or are they done?
No, they're not.
Right. Right now, the way it's been, the way we've been running the meetings for three years, the way we've been running it has been that this is a get and go option. I haven't ever had, with the exception of two people, come back. 15,000 residents in three years of meetings, I've never had somebody have to come back, two people. So, I mean, it has never posed a problem, and really, when you look at it, 15,900 people, five right now are still, we're trying to make a compromise to get five. We're trying to get 100% of everybody happy, but sometimes we just can't get there, and we're going to try to do the very best we can end up doing. Councilman Hagerty.
You know, the week before the meeting, we get the, we get the information the week before the meeting. The number of communications and emails that comes way prior to the meeting is 40 or 50 fold on the given topics. It's, the amount of information that comes to, at least from my standpoint, and the emails that I receive are far greater than any number of people. Not that your voice shouldn't be heard, but your voice is being heard in today's society. Your voice is heard tenfold, not only outside of this room, and outside of the moment on camera, because technology has changed, and the number of emails that I've received prior to the week of the meeting, along with the information, like as I said earlier, then the arguments that are received are far more than what is actually than the arguments that are put forward here. So, a lot of information is already put forward at that point in time, and additional items. But one thing I wanted to ask the motion maker, just as Councilwoman Peterson alluded to, that there's hanky panky going on and things thrown onto the agenda. You had mentioned earlier about having the, to vote on the agenda aspect of that. Would you be, would you amend yours to add that to this motion to make sure that we get that added to the, along with that, that we add that to that?
No. I think that ought to be a separate item. I think if we keep all of these things separate-
Okay.
-it's going to be easier, maybe, to come up with some decision.
Okay.
And this motion, whether it passes or fails, there will be, if it fails, there will be another motion, similar.
Very good.
But not exactly the same. And see if we can move it on. I think if we put all this in one big motion, we might be here till midnight, so we don't want to do that.
Okay. Councilman Morelli.
Thank you, Anna Mayor. I have to go back to what the motion was back in 19, what was it? I'm sorry, 2004, August 12th, and the amendment, and I read it as it was presented to me. Amending section 5.02, Time Limits of the City Council Rules and Procedures, to three minutes citizen participation in the beginning to receive comments on agenda items, we understand that, three minutes at the end, and on each agenda item at the discretion of the mayor. Okay? That expands it significantly from either three at the beginning, or three during the agenda, and nothing at the end. That was a great deal broader than what we're talking about now, in my opinion.
Exactly. Yeah. And you know, I'm talking with our council members, and I know, Councilman Navas, and I hear, East Point does that in the beginning and the end, and not, and I think what they're trying to get to was the beginning and the end, because when they said, at the discretion of the mayor, I didn't have to do that. And it kind of, I said, well, we want to continue. It's very ambiguous. If we were going to kind of lean towards East Point, it was the beginning and the end, like the other communities. Doesn't say on each agenda item, it's at the discretion of the mayor. And I always believe that individual items should always be discussed, but if we really want to look at the ambiguity of the ruling, it never really allowed for speaking in between. At least council never had any thoughts on saying, we want to make certain that we have participation on each agenda item. They said at the discretion of the mayor. So, that's, and so we've always participated by allowing every agenda item be discussed. So, I mean, that's why we're taking such great pains to make sure we understand this motion. I have a motion, yep, by Councilman, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Second by Councilman Hagerty. Everybody understands it, or should we reread it? Do you guys want to? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Opposed. Okay, let's.
I'm against.
Motion fails.
Councilman Morelli opposing.
We're agreed.
Councilman Sexton.
Oh, Sexton, okay.
We have a tie.
Councilman Peterson. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
That motion failed, right?
Yes.
I'd like to make-
My suggestion, just from the discussion that I've seen and the comments I've made, and you may be doing this right now, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, but I think now's the time to bring up the agenda amendment motion.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I move, placing approval of the agenda on, on the agenda, after the Pledge of Allegiance.
Second.
Okay. Now, is there an understanding that, that all amendments for the agenda that night in terms of adding additional material are to occur at that time also?
That's the intent, and deletions would occur at that same time.
Okay, well, I, if you want to make it deletions too, you can, but I mean, there could be some circumstance that occurs during a meeting why someone would want it pulled off. You know, some petitioner who's got an item before you-
Okay.
-and forcing you to have to act on that item if you want it to, I think the bigger concern would be additions.
Yes, I agree. Is that adding agenda items by council? Because what if someone comes in and says, oh, by the way, I've just received this in the mail, and I want to add this to the agenda?
Then, no, that-
So this is strictly for council.
What she's saying is any additions to the agenda would have to occur at that point in time in the meeting, allowing the Pledge of Allegiance at the time of approval of the agenda.
But my question is, is that just for council adding? Because I have, I have people that will come in and-
It would be any, the way it's, you can change the motion to whatever you want.
Any at all.
It has to be a vote by council, doesn't it, to be able to add?
Right now, it's not restricted as to, it's saying that it's limited for agenda amendments for addition, whether by council or proposed from the audience and then presented by council.
Because that too could be debated, you know, approval of the agenda, and we could have somebody say, I'd like to tell you why I don't approve this agenda, I'd like to add this, this, and this. So I think it would work.
Okay.
Anyway, that's the motion, that we add approval of the agenda to the agenda.
And I, and my question is, is when we add something to the agenda, we go through a, council has to vote on whether to add it or not.
Yes.
It's not just a arbitrary add, so there has to be a-
Correct.
-a majority of council that says, yeah, we'll add that.
Right.
And that, that would still apply.
And at the same time, the audience, the citizens would have an opportunity to voice their opinion regarding the agenda, the addition, or no, non addition.
Right.
Most of the time, it's just a formality that's used in, in other communities and at other business meetings. It's not something that's generally debated much, but it does keep us from adding things on the spur of the moment. Thank you.
I guess I just worried, the dangerous here is that I get a lot of requests for agenda items, and we fulfill everybody's requests. I just got one from an industrial individual. Sometimes, let's just use example, public safety. All of a sudden, he wants to quickly add something on here, or a department head or something. Sometimes, we don't even have enough time to absorb what they have, and then we're forced to have to vote. We don't want to do it because we don't have it, when I guess common sense would tell you that adding things like that without all the backup information, that's something I'm concerned. I see we're going to start-
No, this isn't, this isn't changing anything about whether or not an agenda item actually makes it to the agenda. All it's doing is establishing a timing requirement that the vote on approval of the agenda will occur after the pledge-
Okay.
-and then if you're going to come forward with any addition to the agenda, that's the time to do it. Whether that gets added or not, you know, someone may propose, okay, I've got this agenda item that I want added, that could still be rejected by the council as a result of a non-majority vote to add it. In other words, that, that item could fail. It doesn't get added automatically. You're at that point in time moving to approve the agenda, and this happens in many communities. What will happen is, if you're not making any changes, it's motion to approve the agenda. Second, you act on it. In some cases, it'll be, you know, motion to approve the agenda with amendment as proposed by Councilperson Sexton. You act on it. I mean, they'll, you know, it'll, it'll depend on, and for example, that could actually be approved or disapproved. If it's approved, you move on. If it's disapproved, then you would go back and you'd, motion, the next motion would be motion to approve the agenda, support with no mention of the addition, the item being added. So you, you know, eventually you'll get an agenda approved.
Thank you. Councilman Peterson.
Okay, my question is, are we talking regular council meetings only, or does this include the special meetings as well?
Any meeting with an agenda. Any meeting.
Because there's different roles for the special meetings, that's why I'm questioning it. Okay. So it's any meeting, regular or special?
Any meeting.
Okay. Just checking, just clarifying.
Yeah. Councilman Morelli.
Madam Mayor, sorry to be difficult for you, but is there a second to the, to Mayor Pro Tem? You did second it.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you, that one.
Yeah.
Councilman Hagerty. I apologize.
Oh, okay. I have no more lights.
That was my only question.
Motion by Mayor-
I mean, there's some rules that'll supersede on special meetings that are under the Open Meetings Act, but we don't need to get into all of that right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, second by Councilman Hagerty. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I move citizen participation at the beginning of the meeting on agenda items for three to five minutes. And also, allowing participation at the end of the meeting on non-agenda items.
Support.
From a three to five? Two?
Yes. Three to five, and three to five.
Okay. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, three to five on agenda items at the start, three to five on non-agenda items on the end, supported by Councilman Sexton. I have no lights.
Well, I'm thinking, my, my thinking on this one is that someone does speak at the beginning, and then they do have something, another concern, maybe they do go home and put the baby to bed and come back, or see that their son's home from the date and the homework is done, and then they can come back to the council meeting and speak about other items of any concern.
Mm-hmm.
But the agenda items are done, you know, agenda in the beginning, participation in the end.
It's a good compromise, and you're allowing somebody the three to five minute span, so...
Well, yeah, I mean, the, if you don't mind my interceding here, the, it would be more prudent for it to be up to five minutes, rather than a minimum of three to five.
Yeah. Right. Right. As, as one of the, Mike may have mentioned, three, and then we have a two-minute warning. We have a better, yeah, a little bit better system that comes in place.
Thank you. That was an excellent suggestion. We don't want to force people to make up a three-minute schedule.
Councilwoman Peterson.
I totally agree. I don't like limiting at the end, but I'm going to compromise with this, and I agree with Councilwoman. So I'm for this.
So, so I can, you know, just complicate this.
It's going too easy.
Do you want us to, there was mention about a warning, and I noted at the, at the county commission meetings, that they give a, you know, either a 30-second warning that the individual's time is almost up.
Mm-hmm. I like that. I did note that too, and I like it better than that bell, because that bell is annoying. I think we can come up with a better timer.
We could, we could, we would time it here, and then, then we would just indicate one minute. We could just say one minute, or, or some other kind of-
Some states just have a little red LED light that sits right in front of the mayor, and you just flick the light on to give you, you're a little worn that way, nobody's interrupted.
Yeah. A little light.
Yep. Councilman Morelli.
I seem to be creating a lot of trouble this tonight, and I apologize to the citizens and to the rest of council, especially you, Mayor.
It's okay, I want to make sure you're clarified.
The motion, as I understand it, will allow up to five minutes of participation prior to the agenda items, up to five minutes participation after the agenda items are complete, which means that there will be no discussion during the agenda items. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, that's why they're speaking earlier.
Right, let me just-
I just wanted a clarification of that.
Mayor, may I try to restate this, okay? Because I'm supposed to be the parliamentarian on these Robert's Rules and Orders issues. The motion as stated is up to five minutes on agenda items only at the beginning. The speaker then is disabled from participating in any agenda item participation as a citizen. At the conclusion of the meeting, the speaker may speak for up to five minutes on any city business, but not on an agenda item.
Correct. Okay, I have no lights.
In addition, there will be a form of warning that will be incorporated, and what I would do on that is I'd leave it at this point up to the city manager to come up with that, because whether we can pull off an LED light or have to use something else, you know, we really don't know at this point. But there'll be some form of warning intended not to, to cause the least interruption to the speaker.
Great. Okay, I have no lights, that's a great compromise. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, I have seconded by-
Sexton.
-Councilman Sexton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Thank you. That's good. Our next item, pending items of unfinished business. City manager building official update on economic development activities and projects.
Okay, let me just mention something. Will we move on from that?
All right, that was it, we're all done.
Before you move on from that, you're now in a situation where you've got persons who speak at the beginning of the meeting have up to five minutes, persons who don't speak at the beginning of the meeting have three minutes on agenda items, and three minutes at the end of the meeting.
No. 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 It's beginning and the end.
Five at the beginning and five at the end.
Right.
I thought you were just dealing with the persons who speak at the beginning and what they then have at the end, so is there-
Because you need a motion for everyone.
All right, well, let me just, let me hold on for a second. Let's just slow down, one at a time. When we, when we got started on this, we were going to do it all, step at a time, okay? I just need to make sure, if I'm misunderstanding it, it's, that's fine, but the up to five minutes component of that last motion, was, was it intended that that applies not only to persons who were speaking at the beginning of the meeting only, but also to all other persons?
I think we started in pieces, but he did a whole, this is what I just voted on, so let me see if anybody else is in the same brainwave I am right now. Up to five minutes at the beginning of the meeting, you come and speak on any agenda item that you want to discuss. Then we're going to conduct the meeting, and each agenda item, we're not going back on the participation, because we just heard everybody's comment on all the agenda items. At the end of the meeting, now there's five, up to five minutes of anything you'd like to discuss, non-agenda item related, so if you have activities or concerns that didn't relate to the meeting that you want to discuss. That's what I just voted on, yes. Is that what you made the motion?
As parliamentarian, because there's been some question in the past, I want to make sure that it's stated very clearly.
Okay.
There is up to five minutes-
Is that how you made the motion?
-pre, before the meeting commences, for persons to speak on agenda-related items.
Correct.
Throughout the meeting, there is up to three minutes-
No. No.
Well, that's what-
Yeah, right.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to-
Right, just stated it. Okay, let's go back in separate pieces.
Hold on, let me finish, okay? The problem is, is if, if your motion-
Excuse me, we're, can have a meeting here, okay?
If your motion dealt only with the people, listen carefully to this, if your motion that you just made dealt only with the people who are electing to speak at the beginning of the meeting, and had nothing to do with the people who speak during the meeting, you have changed the time period at the end of the meeting, up to five minutes for those people who speak at the beginning, there has not been a corresponding motion to change that period of time at the end of the meeting to up to five minutes for the people who speak at the end of the meeting.
That's there.
He's, he is correct, and you are correct. We have made this motion, and we should up it for everybody at the end of the meeting, if we're going to, if we're going to up it.
Yes. Okay.
Up to five. If everybody settles down, you'll hear, we're trying to get clarification, it doesn't help everybody spouting out that they're not certain what's going on, we're trying to get there, so stay calm and quiet, and we'll get there, so everybody clearly understands. Go ahead, Jeff.
As I wrote this down, okay, it is up to five minutes at the beginning of the meeting to discuss items on the agenda, and then up to five minutes under citizen participation at the end of the meeting on non-agenda items.
Correct. That's the meeting.
That, that is-
That's your participation in the meeting.
Then we added with one minute warning left, and using some type of communication device to-
Is there something we missed, though, Council?
Yes. We, we have-
No.
We have missed the next step then, discussing the middle and the end.
Well, that's my point, because I thought we were moving a step at a time, but if it was the council's intent, that that is the resolution that you want to pass for all participation.
It wasn't.
Okay, that's my point.
Okay, so this is for part of it, now we got to move on to the other parts.
Second part. Well, I want to understand what I'm doing in the middle before I vote on the front and the end.
We haven't decided.
What is the intent?
Okay.
We haven't decided.
So we need somebody to do the middle, and somebody to do the end, if you like. So we need somebody to do the middle and somebody to do the end, if you like.
No. The beginning and end is done.
Beginning and end is done. The middle is the only thing that's left.
Because the way, the way, we were sitting here talking about, the way that we understood it was that you have two opportunities to speak, one at the beginning, one at the end, and there is no discussion, citizen participation on individual agenda items under-
That's how I voted on it, Jeff.
...considerations.
That's not what we, no.
Yeah, that's how.
But I understand, you know, that's why we're trying to get someone clear.
Well, then we're going to have to go back to the original vote then because that was my understanding. I said again, if we were going to increase the time at the beginning, so they had the